Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Steve Marsh is the pastor at Westminster Presbyterian Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman John Pettis if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we humbly ask you, as for the people of Oklahoma City, so especially for members of council and the mayor, that you would be pleased to direct and prosper all their deliberations and decisions for the safety, honor, and welfare of the people, that all things may be so ordered and settled by their endeavors upon the best and surest foundations, that peace and happiness, truth and justice, virtue and piety may be established among us. Keep the council members and mayor and all of us this day in health of body and soundness of mind, in purity of heart and cheerfulness of spirit, in contentment with our lot and charity with our neighbor. Further, all our lawful undertakings with your blessing. These and all other necessaries for the council and mayor, as well as the peace and prosperity of our city, we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the meeting to order. Item three from the office of the mayor is a presentation from Roy Williams, who's the president of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. Roy comes by quarterly to give us an update on the chamber's activities. Roy, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you. Mayor, member of council, Mr. City Manager, thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I always look forward to this. I have about six things I want to quickly touch on, and certainly would take any questions any of you might have about them. The first being is something that is right in front of us, and that is an upcoming national conference, the American Chamber of Commerce Executives, which starts Tuesday of next week and goes through Friday of next week. Just under 1,000 of my peers across not only the United States, but North America and across the world are going to be ascending upon Oklahoma City for this four-day conference. And these are chamber leaders in 88 of the top 100 metros in the U.S., along with many midsize, major size, and smaller cities. The ACC membership is composed of literally thousands of organizations across the country, and they represent over $70 million, 70 million employees of their membership. The theme for this year's conference is momentum, and it is in Oklahoma City because of the momentum Oklahoma City has enjoyed over the last couple decades, and my peers are interested in seeing how that has come about. So we're excited to try to impress them about what's going on. And they're also very interested in seeing how public investment in city infrastructure and the importance in quality of life and economic development efforts lead the way. We're fortunate to have Governor Fallon, who will be addressing the group, as well as a masterclass that will be conducted by former Mayors Ron Norrick, Kirk Humphreys, and current Mayor Mick Cornett, along with myself. So that's a half-day program that will be a featured topic of the conference. And as an adjunct to this conference, our association brings in the nation's leading site-location consultants, corporate site-location consultants. So we partner with them, and we get them for half of the conference for our own time. So we're going to be entertaining those corporate site-location consultants and telling them a whole lot about the opportunities for corporate expansion and relocation to Oklahoma City. So we're excited about that. Second thing I wanted to touch on was the recent intercity visit that we had to Austin April 4th and 5th. We took over 60 civic and business leaders to Austin for our annual benchmarking trip. We just completed compiling the full report of the trip, and that's going to be mailed to the council probably this week. So you'll all get a copy of that. Just to give you a little bit, though, about some of the key takeaways. What we saw there was how important it is for us to grow our intellectual capital. That helps with attracting talent and companies. In fact, there's an article in today's Oklahoman kind of about that. The other thing we saw is that Austin is having major problems with congestion. It's important for growing cities to plan and implement the expansion of highway systems and public transit. And Austin really told us how much of a problem it has been in their city. They've also, like Oklahoma City, have experienced very significant urban sprawl, and they're seeing a great need of a regional transit plan to help commuters move throughout their region and to decrease the congestion that they're having. And the final thing is, and this was part, I think, Mayor, of one of your programs last year, was the redevelopment of the Mueller Airport in Austin. And they're really trying to develop an urban community development within the city. So it's an interesting model that's being pursued. The third thing I want to mention is the wrap-up and the end of the 2013 state legislative session. May, we wrapped that up, and we believe it was a pretty good one. There was very historical workers' compensation reform signed into law, and that really changes how claims will be handled. And in all likelihood, this may be the most significant piece of pro-business legislation enacted in the last decade. We were able to keep some very key economic development incentive programs intact, so there was no expansion, but protection. And those included the tax credit for Oklahoma investment and new jobs, as well as historic rehabilitation tax credits, which has been very valuable to Oklahoma City. And the final thing in the legislative session was that the Department of Transportation's eight-year plan and the governor's bridge improvement plan remained intact, which protects several of Oklahoma City area transportation projects, including the construction of the downtown boulevard, work on major interchanges, and the widening of State Highway 74 north of Lake Hefner Parkway. A fourth area I want to touch on is retail. And our recent participation in the International Council of Shopping Centers in Las Vegas this last year, we took a delegation of a couple dozen people in May. Since that conference, which we had 30 one-on-one meetings in a two-day timeframe there, we've had four site visits, and two more site visits are planned this month. And we're working with both new-to-market retailers and several who are expanding their footprints in our market. Just as a reminder, in the past two years, we've had more than 30 retailers open in the central business district. And at least three new retailers are set to open in the coming months, the major ones being Von Mar at Quail Springs Mall, Nordstrom Rack, and Belle Isle in the art of shaving as well. And I would share with you, too, that the outlet shops remain 100% leased, and sales continue to exceed expectations. Fifth area, economic development. May and June were relatively slow. We sort of attributed it to maybe the severe weather we had, but we heard from peers around the country that that wasn't necessarily the case, that national activity was relatively slow. But all of a sudden, we've seen our pipeline pick up on both large and small projects, and we anticipate some announcements in the next couple of weeks and months. You recently saw in the media that AT&amp;T announced that they were adding over 100 new jobs in the Oklahoma City office, and they're already hiring in those positions. So we're glad to see that new investment and new jobs. Unfortunately, our success has become one of our impediments. Because there is the lack of availability of office space, acreage, and industrial facilities, we're losing clients every day because they're all looking for existing space, and we basically don't have any. It is basically all full. So it's kind of a catch-22 problem. And everything large, say, large 50,000 square feet contiguous space and on up, is practically nonexistent in our market. But it's a good problem to have. Last thing I want to touch on has to do with the weather and the tornado business recovery. As you would imagine, we received a lot of questions from existing companies, companies who we were working with, about the storms, about safety issues, about business interruption because of weather, et cetera. Concurrently with that, we created an initiative to help businesses recover that were directly impacted by the storms. Partnering with the City of Oklahoma City, the City of Moore, the Moore Chamber of Commerce, the South Oklahoma City Chamber, and the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, we created the Greater Oklahoma City Back to Business Initiative, which we announced a couple days after the May tornadoes, to help businesses that are directly impacted by the storms. According to the Institute for Business and Home Safety, after a major disaster like this, 25% of the businesses that are impacted will not reopen. So the lesson in that is, the quicker you can get to them, the quicker you can help them, the more likely you'll reduce that 25% of closure. So that was why, in the aftermath of the disaster, we wanted to put together this initiative as quickly as possible. And part of what we did was, we tracked the storm path on a map and used GIS to plot the location of all the businesses that were in the area. And the data comes from GIS and available business databases nationally. And just to give you a sense of the damage, as opposed to not an official damage count, this is what we found. And that was, in the direct path of the tornado in the Moore and South Oklahoma City tornado, there were 296 businesses that were directly hit. And the largest percentage of business types that were were construction businesses, retail businesses, and healthcare and social assistance businesses. We looked at the path and a mile on either side of the path, and there were additional 1,823 businesses located within that line. Doesn't mean they were necessarily directly impacted, but could have been indirectly impacted. When you look at what were those businesses' types, the largest percentages were construction businesses, retail, healthcare, hotels, and restaurants. They were businesses of all size and types, everything from home base, micro businesses, to very large construction operations. We assembled a number of volunteers, as well as our staff. We did over 2,000 telephone calls, outreach to those businesses to try to find out the extent of their damage or impact. We called chamber members, as well as non-members, and surrounding businesses to help contact. And using the damage map and GIS information, we're able to reach out to most all of them. And so our intent was to connect impacted businesses with businesses who had resources to help them. And we did that via a website we set up. And we also shared with these businesses how they could get federal and state aid. So we were able to meet with FEMA and the SBA to get accurate information on what these specific businesses could or should do. We then shared this in conversations with damaged businesses, in our newsletter, through email blasts, social media, various media outlets. They all helped promote it, and it is still on our website, greateroklahomacitychamber.com/backtobusiness. And the kind of last thing I want to mention is that we want to remind businesses and homeowners about the upcoming deadline. It was just extended, I think, today from August 19th to, I mean, from July 19th to August 19th. So there's been some time added on for anyone who's had damage to apply for assistance from FEMA. We've also seen an outpouring of support across the country. Dozens and dozens of chambers of commerce across the country have raised money and sent it to us and to the Moore Chamber. Dozens of chambers have joined the Moore Chamber to show their financial support. So we're seeing our friends from across the country reach out to us. So with that, I'll conclude and be happy to answer any questions.
Roy, two questions. One, on the work and comp changes in Oklahoma. How does that leave us in comparison to, say, Texas, for instance? Is it as good as, better than, or?
It makes us competitive. I wouldn't say it races us ahead or puts us behind, but now I think we're competitive.
The second question is, the federal employees out of Tinker have taken a furlough issue.
Correct.
And we're losing 20% of their income for the next several months. Has a chamber man, any kind of estimate as to what impact that will have on the City of Oklahoma City's revenue stream?
Well, I would add to that, you know, there's also a buyout of probably about 750. So we've not done hard analysis of it, but it's pretty easy to do it kind of on a piece of paper. Whenever there's a 20% furlough like that, that's essentially a 20% layoff in terms of economic impact. So, you know, it's significant. And we knew that sequestration was coming and knew this was going to happen, but really not much we can do about it, other than try to reach out to these people and see what kind of assistance we might be able to provide them. Thank you.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to publicly thank you and the chamber for your hard work as we work towards bringing retail development in the full-size grocery store to northeast Oklahoma City. So again, thank you and your staff for your hard work and your continued support, working with me to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your interest, and we do look forward to working.
Yeah, Roy, I don't usually like to do this, but I just got wind last night that it's been announced that University of Oklahoma is going to purchase property from the Health Sciences area.
The Presbyterian Research Park.
Presbyterian Research Park. And the bioscience has been a very key economic area of activity for us for a number of years. From your perspective, will this have any positive, negative, or no impact on that area as an economic engine as we go forward?
Well, we were well aware of that occurring, and certainly it raised concern to us about potentially the research park just becoming more of the university as opposed to a research park. But OU has assured us that that will continue to be a research park and that they will continue really the direction that PHF had. And PHF will continue to be located there, as well as the bioscience companies who are there. Their leases have been extended. So, you know, we're hoping that it does continue. PHF, well, I think, will retain some property that is not now developed, that potentially could be developed down the road if they so choose. But we're always concerned when something like that changes hands because new owners always have new ideas. And so that's why we're reaching out to OU to make sure we understand what they want to do and that we can be of assistance. There is some space out there that we're working with them on filling, so we're hoping it's going to be a positive thing.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Roy?
I got one.
Yeah?
You mentioned that we're losing people because of no space.
Right.
As we're running out, so can you kind of address that a little bit more in detail? Because I'm kind of unfamiliar with that.
Well, our market demand is so strong right now for space. I mean, for instance, downtown, there's really no contiguous Class A office space of any size. And that's a good problem, that the demand is there. But likewise, we don't have a national development community here. Our development community is local and regional, and so they tend to build for users. They don't tend to build for a user on the come. So we don't have speculative space in industrial office warehouse. So there's not vacant space out there waiting to be had. The only time we get vacant space is when someone moves out of it or decides, you know, to sell it. But our market is so strong that when it comes on the market, it's gone. So we have no product out there that we can go market. And as a result, when we get inquiries from corporate real estate executives or site-location consultants and say, "We want to look at 100, 200,000 square foot warehouse, office, manufacturing facility," we have to say, "We don't have any."
Do you see anybody starting that?
No.
Like doing more of the?
We don't. We just don't. The speculative market really just kind of doesn't exist anymore.
Oh, anywhere?
No. So the backup plan on that is to have shovel-ready sites, meaning all the infrastructure's in place, all of the correct zoning permitting, and everything is in place, so that the minute a person decides, you can start construction and get them in in six months, nine months. That's about the best alternative we can have.
Okay. Thanks.
And Roy, I assume in our peer cities regionally, there are vacant spaces. If you go to the Dallas metro area, there's a lot of inventory.
We have a lot of national developers in those markets, and they build a lot of spec space. And there's a lot of churn.
Any other questions for Roy? Please pass along our best to your staff. We appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Still on item three of the council agenda, look for a motion to push forward the appointments on item 3B and 3C. These are for the Library Commission and the Urban Design Commission. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for July 2nd. And item four B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for June 18th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, on page 20, under item 8E1, page 20, item E 1708 North Gatewood, we ask that that be stricken, the owner's removed. Item G 3801 South Mabel, we ask that that be stricken, we'll rework that as property maintenance. Item I 813 Northwest 8th Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has removed. Item Q 416 Northwest 28th, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has removed. Item T 3832 Southwest 34th, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has removed. Moving on to page 21, under item 8F1, item A 1304 Southwest Binkley, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item K 3801 South Mabel, we ask that that be stricken, we'll rework that as dilapidated. Item O 2123 West Park, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item P 1515 North Quapa, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item T 4010 Northwest 9th, we ask that that be stricken, that is now occupied. Item X 3240 Northwest 13th, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item Z 3643 Northwest 15th, we ask that that be stricken, we'll rework that as dilapidated. Item double H 3312 Southwest 21st, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item double L 1633 Northwest 29th, we ask that that be stricken, there's now a new owner. Item double M 1536 Northwest 30th, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item double N 1326 Southwest 32nd, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Double O 2919 Northwest 32nd, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item double Q 2324 Northwest 39th, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Double W 329 Southeast 69th, we ask that that be stricken, we will rework that as property maintenance. Double X 620 Southeast 71st, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item double Y 3220 Southwest 72nd, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Moving on to page 22, item 8G2, AG2, that's revocable for the Lighthouse Spirit Triathlon, and that event has been canceled, so we'd like to strike that item. Again, that's 8G2. And then, under Claims for Denial, item 8N1B, 8N1B. David Ettrich, we ask that that be deferred until July 30th.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for clarification, E1A, was that stricken? E1A? Can I get that item deferred for a few weeks, please?
Well, did anyone show up today to speak on it? I hate to defer it if they've come down to talk about it today. Is anyone here wishing to speak on item 8E1A, the property at 2118 North Bath Avenue?
I believe this particular owner of the property contacted me yesterday, and there was some type of agreement with staff that they would give her extra time. And so I see it wasn't deferred, so that's the reason why I brought it up.
Okay. Why don't we wait till we get to that point, and then we'll have it deferred?
All right. Thank you.
Sure. All right, let's recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are, see, it looks like about 12 items. Comments or questions on the MFA?
Your Honor, I have a minor question on two items, H Hotel and I India. There are agreements with attorneys to be ready for us if we need them. Do we pay them a retainer for that service?
I don't believe we pay them a retainer. I believe we just pay them an hourly rate.
I see they are used.
They do the work and bill the hours to us, and we pay them as they do the work.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure. Any other comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Well, adjourn the OC MFA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are five items.
Move the items.
Second?
Second, I do have one quick question.
Okay.
Okay. As, thank you, Mr. Mayor, as it relates to item B, why is the study needed and why is it costing $125,000?
I'll have Tom Anderson come in and talk to you about the scope of work that we're doing for the ballpark.
Your Honor, I have a question also about that, the marketing, I understand, but feasibility? Feasibility of what?
We'll have Tom come in. It has to do with feasibility of some of the items that they can, other options and opportunities for the ballpark.
Okay.
Here comes Tom. Tom's here.
Morning, Mayor, members of the council. Tom Anderson, City Manager's Office. With all respect, I caught part of the question, Councilman Pettis. Would you please be so courteous as to repeat it?
Sure. Thank you. Why is a study needed, and why are we looking at the marketing feasibility study?
Certainly. The breakdown of ballpark was really the threshold of the MAPS projects and really demonstrated the success, that we were on the right track, and we followed through with our commitment to the public with the subsequent MAPS project. But the ballpark has a special place in everyone's heart. It's 15 years old now, and we wanted to take the opportunity to bring in professional firms to evaluate what fan amenities have been developed in recent years that add to the patron experience, such as potentially, and we're not committing to this, but areas like kid zones, doing some things to add more interaction between the club level and the playing field. Right now, it's kind of closed off, and if you're in the club level, you can't really see the action on the field. And, you know, make some more public areas and where groups could book, say, like a party deck, a corporation could do that, or families could do that. And really, ideas that will not only, it won't detract, the intention is not to detract from the architectural significance of the facility, but to bring it up to modern standards in terms of the fan experience.
When the ballpark opened in 98?
April of 98.
98, in April 98, it was one of the top minor league ballparks in the country, if not the top minor league ballpark. And it probably isn't anymore. And so if there are things we can do to keep it current, keep it modern, we're trying to explore those options.
So ultimately, depending on what the recommendations of the marketing feasibility study, there may be things we may want to add, may be things that we don't want to add. But we want to make it a better, it's a good experience now for the patrons. We might want to make that better. We want to drive more ticket sales, which benefits our resident AAA baseball team and benefits the city as well. But no predetermination has been, predetermination has made as to specifically what elements might be added, and those decisions will be brought back for council consideration at a later time.
Any other comments or questions for Tom?
Yeah. Excuse me, Your Honor. Tom, would you go into, the study calls for marketing and feasibility, and what is the feasibility part of that?
I guess what we're doing is, we'll let the consultants do an assessment of ballparks that have either been constructed within, say, the last five years, and also those that are on the drawing board, and look at what elements that they are adding to attract patrons to those events. So the feasibility really consists of a number of criteria. One is, from a practical standpoint, given the existence- One is, from a practical standpoint, given the existing structure, can it be done? And if the cost benefit of a particular element that might be recommended is worth a financial investment. So, there's kind of a return on investment, probably drilled down to each level of whatever components come out of this study. And then, the city and Mandalay baseball properties will convene and decide, yes, this is a good idea for this structure, or no, this one is not. Try to drill down on that, and bring that back to council for consideration.
All right. Ready to vote on the PPA?
Thank you.
Make that the MFA. We voted, okay, so we're on the PPA. Any other comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. PPA passed unanimously. Adjourned, the OC PPA convenes with the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Any comments or questions here?
Just a quick question, Your Honor. Number A, Alpha, we're going to spend $1 million replacing garbage carts. About how many do we get for $1 million?
Marshall, come in and answer that?
Okay, thank you. Will you replace them, is it fair wear and tear on the things that we're placing for? Are they damaged? And if they are damaged, do we have any recourse with the customer as far as collecting some cost of that?
You know, our Big Blue services have been in place now for, gosh, 20 years, and...
Exactly.
More than that?
Twenty-five years.
Yeah, 25 years, maybe.
It's a really great system, I have no problem with the system.
Some of them are just fatiguing and worrying out. Marshall, what's a Big Blue cost?
So, Big Blue costs $65.
So we'll get quite a few for $1 million?
Yes, but we are replacing about $20,000 a year typically, just to give you an order of magnitude, and then new customers take on another $10,000 or so a year.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the EAT? Motion? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourned, the OC EAT reconvened the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the subject Individual Considerations.
All right, is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. We have one person that has signed up to speak. Are there any individual considerations from the council?
Your Honor, I have a question on Alpha Victor AV.
And, Your Honor, I have a question in regards to 6AM.
All right, Pat?
Just a quick question, it has to do with some, a team of attorneys we're putting together, and one of the attorneys they list is James R. Moore. Is that the same Jim Moore that represents the FOP and Firefighters Union all the time?
It is. He was requested to be on there by the FOP.
He's really a good attorney, but it seemed like there's a sort of inherent confidence of interest there, but that's just my opinion, so. If you're satisfied, Kenny, I'm, but it seems like he's a great attorney. I'm not questioning his qualifications. In fact, I wish he was on our side more often, but it seems like it was just a little awkward having him on our attorney list, and as a representative of people that we are in negotiations with all the time.
And my question, thank you, Mr. Mayor, is 6AM. Quick question, when will the master plan for the zoo be finished?
Can't answer that for you, sir, but I'd be happy to get that information back to you.
Okay, thank you. And then, my next question, Mr. Mayor, am I a trustee of the zoo trust yet?
You are not.
Okay, thank you.
We have one person that signed up to speak, Rosea McKinney Foster.
Good morning, Your Honor, to the council. I'm here to speak on behalf of Antonio McKinney, a young man from Ward 7, and I recognize my neighbor Ward 7 Councilman John Pettis. This item is a very small item considering the amounts of money you guys consider, but this young man submitted a claim for damages and for loss amounting to $974.84. I just needed a clarification. He couldn't come because he couldn't get off work, and I just wanted to understand why his claim was, is not recognized in total.
Okay, see if we can find out here. Kenny, can you help us?
How much did you say that amount was again?
His rental was $474.84, and his deductible of $500. And I only come because this young man is struggling, paying student loans, working, having relocated, having been sent to another state and relocated here, and it seems like a small amount, but it is significant to him.
What item is this?
Item 6AW4.
AW?
Thank you.
Uh huh. What can you tell us about this?
Good morning, Amy Harrison, Municipal Counselor's Office. We did receive information that his deductible was $500, and we received a receipt for a rental in the amount of $304.94, which is why we approved it for $804.94.
You want to come back up and address it?
The receipt that I have shows $474.84, I'm sorry. Okay, that, there was a portion that was not approved for the rental insurance. We approved the rental car, but not the rental insurance. That's an optional.
You bet.
I have a question about AS. I'm just curious, this is about, this is our agreement with the county jail, $3 million. We're going to increase the estimated number of prisoners per day by 16% from 145 prisoners today, per day, to 168 prisoners per day. I'm just curious what's happening over time. I mean, what, is that...
It's actually been fairly consistent. It hasn't gone up greatly. This is the first year that it's been increased for a while. The room, the daily rate increases slightly with the cost of living each year, but the number of prisoners has been pretty constant, except for this year. I'd ask Chief City to come in and expand upon that.
Okay, that's about a 16% increase.
But it's, that is not a steep inclining rate, it's been pretty flat.
It's been, okay.
But Bill can come in and give you the specifics on that.
Okay, thanks.
Hopefully. There he is. Chief, the number of prisoners at the county jail has been, it's going up this year, but it's been a pretty flat rate, has it not?
Right. We base, what we do is we base the contract numbers this year based on the average for last year. So they're always a year behind, so the numbers we're basing the contract on are actually the actual numbers that we booked into jail last year. So, this year, if we booked, whatever number we booked this year, we'll base the contract on the next year. So actually, they're kind of a year behind, but like the city manager said, it's been pretty consistent, but our bookings, the number of people we're putting in jail, have increased really over the last year and a half.
Are we still charging the prisoners to be in jail?
Yes.
How much does that offset this bill?
We do periodic reports on that. I don't know when the next one's coming, but we do reports on those accounts.
But that money goes into the courts fund, it doesn't go to...
Goes to the general fund, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket?
Quick question, Mr. Mayor, as it relates to 6AW4. For clarification, so the city does not pay for car rental even though the city may have been responsible for the damage?
We paid for the car rental. We paid for the car rental, it's the insurance. He got the additional insurance from the rental car company. Yeah, in addition to whatever insurance he would have had.
Okay, thank you.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrents docket. How about a motion?
Move the items?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the concurrents docket? Ready to vote? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. First is a zoning case in Ward 6. The address is 1324 Southwest 44th Street. It's currently our one single-family residential, and it would become a new simplified plan unit development. Is the developer here on this issue? Are we still looking for the easement?
I received the easement this morning, so we'll get there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Enrique Gomez, and my wife owns that property.
What are you hoping to accomplish here? What are you going to be building?
Well, actually, it's been a business office since she bought it, and as long as she remember, it has been a business office. It was an attorney's office like 20 years ago, and it's been an office for a long time. We learned last year that it's a zoning residential, so an office is not permitted there, and that's why we're changing.
You're trying to bring in compliance with the existing use?
Exactly.
All right, well, if the easement's in line, I was told Meg's okay with this. I'll need a motion, though, from someone. Second, all right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Good luck. Item 8B are items that came to us from the Planning Commission. Item 8B1 is a Ward 7 property just west of Sheridan, I see, a portion of West Sheridan, between Vinskill Avenue and North Mickey Mantle Drive. John, you okay with this? No, John left the room. Apparently he is. How about a motion on 8B1? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8B2 is also a Ward 7 property on North Harvey. How about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8B3 is a Ward 2 case. Ed, you okay with this one?
I am.
All right.
Move for approval.
Second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then, item 8B4 is a situation in Ward 2 that would close Northwest 58th Street between Chartel and Classic. Ed, you all right with that?
I am. I move for approval.
Cast your votes on item 8B4. Passed unanimously. Item 8C are items that came to us from the Traffic Commission. All of these are from Ward 6. I'm told Councilman Salyer has been working with them, but we will need to vote on them separately, so I'll, I guess, ask for a series of motions here, one at a time, first on item 8C1.
So move.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8C2.
So move.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8C3.
So move.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8C4. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8C5. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
While we're on parking, may I ask a question? On the handicap parking, are those people supposed to plug the meter as well?
Yes.
Because they don't get free parking just because they have a handicap sticker on their car or sign.
You know, I believe that's right, Mr. Ryan, but let me, let's check into that. I'll get back to you on that, but I'm pretty sure that is correct.
All right, item 8D is an ordinance going to be introduced today. We'll be setting a public hearing for August 13th, and Bob Teener is here to give us an explanation of what this ordinance would accomplish.
Morning. I'll just cover some of the highlights here real quickly. Primarily, this is addressing our commercial truck ordinance. This prohibits commercial trucks from parking in neighborhoods. We're amending the definition to say vehicle instead of truck, because it's been argued that buses and boats may not be a truck, so we're clarifying that. We're expanding the definition of trailers. We're including utility trailers and other types of trailers that haven't been covered in the past. We're including aircraft and watercraft in the vehicle identification. Some people have small aircraft that they'll park in their driveway, and there's been times where we haven't been able to enforce that part of the ordinance. And then, we define a watercraft. This really covers jet skis. You know, typically, when you call boat, you're looking at a typical boat, but jet skis are included. Then we're amending the parking and storage conditions. We're adding watercraft on a trailer to that definition. We're requiring hard surface paving for the storage of RV vehicles, and we're also requiring screening. We eliminated the maximum size for an RV. Basically, what we're doing here is there's a provision that says you can't park within 11 feet of the curb, so we really don't care on the size of the vehicle as much as we do the distance from the street. We're prohibiting obstruction of the sidewalk. We're prohibiting them parking in front. When you have an L-shaped house where the garage extends forward, we've had people that park beside the garage in front of the porch, and consider that a side yard, and that's really the front yard. We're just clarifying that definition. And then, we're prohibiting parking trailers on the street.
Your Honor, a question. Who's going to enforce the obstruction of sidewalks? Is that going to be a police issue or a zoning issue?
The police will enforce that requirement. They're doing that currently.
And they'll respond to customer or citizen complaints?
Yes.
Any comments or questions here? This item being introduced today, a public hearing set for August 13th, and we're scheduling a final vote for August 27th. Second? Cast your votes. And 8D passes unanimously. Item 8E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8E? And, John, you had some questions about 2118 North Bath. Charles, can you fill us in on this property here? John's had some feedback that they may need some more time. Yeah, item 8E1A.
They have had contact with the inspector. As you can see, that the foundation's decayed from this photo. It's, the roof's danger, it's sagging, there's holes in it. It's, it'll have to be, the decking and stuff will have to be repaired. They'll have to get a permit to do that if they're going to repair it.
Does it look like, is there some danger of collapsing?
It already has. That's, when it's fallen in like that, that's, oh, sorry. It already, it's starting, the roof is already collapsing on it, and the ceiling underneath it will be the same condition.
Okay, let's keep it on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll keep it on there for 30 days, and if the homeowner is watching, they'll need to work with staff and start working to figure out how to resolve this. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8E? All right, did we get a motion? How about a motion on item 8D? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8F? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a series of revocable right-of-way permits. The first is the Art Council's request to hold art moves on July 19th, August 2nd, and August 16th, and also in September and 13th in Ward 6. And Maureen Hefferman is here. Want to come forward? And Liz Johnson? Oh, those are, those are, those are other events, okay. Is anyone here wishing to speak on item 8G1, which is the art moves from the Art Council? All right, how about a motion then?
Second?
Cast your votes on that. That passed unanimously. Item 8G2 has been struck, so now let's hear from Maureen on item 8G3. This is the Myriad Gardens Foundation's event, the Myriad Botanical Gardens Midweek Market. Good morning, Maureen.
Good morning. We've started a farmer's market, and the vendor, who is our primary vendor, needs additional space to load and have a refrigerated truck each Wednesday from about 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So we'd like to ask if we could use the Sheridan loading dock that's adjacent to our sidewalks for that purpose. And it's for a limited time. There are... There are Wednesdays, July 17th, 24th, 31st, and August, all the Wednesdays in August.
Okay. Staffs looked into this and it seems to be okay. Any comments from council? Well, we certainly want to encourage the farmer's market business, so we'd love to get some feedback too and how we can help and be a part of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Maureen. How about a motion then on item eight G three?
So move.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item eight G four is the University of Central Oklahoma's request to hold Rock for Oklahoma, July 23rd. And Liz Johnson is here from UCO. Good morning, Liz.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and the council. Thank you for having me here today. I am Liz Johnson. I represent the Academy of Contemporary Music at the University of Central Oklahoma. And we would like to host an event on Reno between Gaylord and Robinson. It's called Rock for Oklahoma. And it is a part of the main event, which will be held at the Chesapeake Energy Arena, but we wanted to have that area outside for our students to perform and to be involved with the event. And also during that time, people will be able to attend the event and text donations to the United Way campaign to help in the tornado relief efforts. So that's what we'd like to do.
So will the students be performing outside?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's a week from today.
Yes, it is.
All right.
So.
I was just going to thank you, but you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you for all you do down there.
Thank you.
All right, how about a motion then on item eight G four?
Second.
All right, motion is second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item eight H. This item has been deferred until July 30th. And then item eight I is a public hearing regarding the ambulance code here. Do you want to defer this one too, Larry, or do you want to go ahead and hear this one today?
No, I think it would be prudent to defer this and very briefly why. Last week, the selection committee appointed by the trustees of Emsa convened in Tulsa. We reviewed proposals from two potential vendors. A recommendation was drawn up. That recommendation will be presented to the Emsa Trust at its next meeting. That recommendation will involve the exact provider that the committee has recommended, levels of service and cost of providing that service. And those levels of service and cost of providing would, I think, impact what we decide to do as far as the total care rates in the immediate future. So I think it'd be prudent for the council to defer this until we have that information, have staff, city staff, had a chance to put that into our formulas, to come up with, are there any changes that we should make based on what happens, and then move forward from there. So I would like to move that we continue it.
All right. Is there a second to defer item eight I until July 30th?
And this is good news. I mean, the bids, they weren't bids, the proposals came in very aggressively and so there will be some cost savings most likely achieved.
Good. All right, cast your votes on the deferral. That item is deferred until July 30th. Item eight J is a joint resolution with the Airport Trust for us to issue some taxable bonds. And Kenny Soodle is here from the Finance Department. Good morning, Kenny.
Good morning, Kenton Soodle, Finance Department. There's a resolution this morning before you. It's a joint resolution with the Airport Trust stating their intent to issue revenue bonds to fund the consolidated rental car facility. From, on your resolution, it has a not-to-exceed amount of $50 million. However, at this time, we believe that the bond issue will probably be somewhere in the range of $43 million. These will be junior lien taxable bonds secured by the general revenues of the airport. However, the $4.50 customer facility charge that went into effect in July, last July of '12, we believe that that will generate enough to more than pay for the debt service on these bonds. We believe that the bonds will, the debt service will probably be somewhere around 3.2 million per year. And we think that, you know, it will also, having the CFCs be in excess of the debt service will provide additional flexibility in the future for the Airport Trust for other projects. So this is a statement of intent resolution. We'll be coming back to you in August for the formal approval resolution and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is the city obligated at all?
Excuse me?
Is there any obligation that would transfer to the city's general fund out of this?
No, on this, there's not. This would be an obligation of the Airport Trust.
And if they failed to make their payments, for whatever reason, it would just be between them and the bondholder?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You want to make a motion, Pat?
I want the item.
Okay, is there a second on item eight J? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight K, understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
Okay. How about a motion then?
Move the resolution.
Cast your votes. Item eight K passed unanimously. Understand we do not need executive session on eight L?
Do not.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. That item passed unanimously. Item eight M, understand we do not need executive session. We could strike that.
Strike.
Cast your votes. Item is struck. Item eight N is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under eight N? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Second? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under item nine? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 10 is items from council. James, you want to get us started today? All right, Ed?
Yeah, comments about two public meetings. One, the first is the ODOT meeting about the Boulevard, which is about a month ago, which we haven't talked about yet. The Federal Highway Administration wants basically ODOT to study the grid option versus the recommendation of STANTech. And I would like two clarifications if we can ask. The first would be that it was brought up that it's not a use-it-or-lose-it situation. In other words, if we don't spend the money right now, we could wait a number of years and we would still have those funds to use. And I just want to, I want to confirm with ODOT that that's true, that you could build the entrances on the east and west side, not do the middle portion, and instead of guessing what the traffic is like in 2030, you could wait a number of years and kind of get a better idea and you would still have those funds. The second question is, when I talked to Eric Winger about the grid option, he, his, one of his primary concerns is that some of the north-south roads are not built for maybe what he's envisioning, some of this grid traffic. And so I'm curious whether you could take the funds for the middle portion and use them to enhance our grid, those streets. In other words, basically Project 180, existing Oklahoma City downtown grid streets. Could you use those funds in that manner to enhance your grid? And in that way, you'd still have your Boulevard, you'd still have near the park and the convention center, just beyond Southwest Third. Could you use those funds to do a Project 180-like project? Second was last night's meeting on the streetcar, which, my personal, I got home from work late and I had to watch it on the internet, but, which I'll continue to do so that I can do other things, because frankly, it just wasn't that useful. I think that there's pushback. I think that the framework needs to be abandoned. Basically, we had consultants that were on the phone and then people are writing their questions. It feels very controlling. The woman that was just here from the Myriad Gardens Foundation stood up and said, this feels stifling, this feels controlling, this feels like a public relations as opposed to a public forum. And then the crowd kind of erupted in applause. So it seemed universal that this, and we didn't used to do it this way. When we had the meetings on the park, the downtown park at the library, people got to stand up and ask questions. You had interface and interaction between the consultants and the public. And now it's, we're just, we're not allowing that. We're just, we're choosing what questions get asked and it feels very stifling. And so I'd push that we abandon that. I'd push that at some point, maybe we get people of opposing views in some of these larger projects with public meetings. Some of what these consultants are saying, which they're presenting as matters of fact, are very, very controversial. And it might be useful on some of these to have people with different opinions in front of the public and let the public kind of get a sense for what the different prevailing opinions are out there. Economic development as a result of couplets, for example. I mean, there's very different opinions and what's being presented is, sounds very factual, but it's very, some of it's very controversial. One issue in particular, they asked the consultants, why, why were we denied federal funds for the streetcar? And they said two or three times, well, it was because of the cost effectiveness of our project. And I didn't really understand, and I don't think anybody necessarily understood what they, what they meant. What I'd ask is that we get a written response from the FTA. Let's just ask the feds, why, you've invested in almost every city, like 19 out of 20 cities, but you haven't invested in Oklahoma City. Why, why is that? Just ask them directly. And, because when I listen to Rick Kane, or when I listen to Jarrett Walker, who we brought here, they're saying that the feds are saying, because you, you don't have a plan to pay for the operations and maintenance and you're bringing a mode of transit online that constitutes more than 5% of your current transit budget. I mean, that, maybe that's not right, but that's what I'm hearing from them and that's a very black and white answer and that's not the answer that was given last night. Last night was given an answer that was quite different. So I would just ask that we ask the feds directly to put in writing exactly why Oklahoma City seems to be singled out to not receive federal funding. Thanks.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just like to remind the neighbors out in Ward three that there are three neighborhood meetings coming up this week. River Park and Windsor Forest have neighborhood meetings scheduled for Thursday night and then tonight, Meridian Hills has a neighborhood meeting scheduled. I'd like to encourage the neighbors to come out, get involved, let their voices be heard. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Pete?
I attended that streetcar meeting last night. I'm not wired up. I need to be. I attended.
Pete, were the consultants delayed by weather? Why weren't they there?
I'm sure some logistical. That was distracting without question to try to do that on the phone.
That was my feedback.
Especially with somebody that doesn't hear any better than I do, then that you get the extra of a speakerphone in a large room like that. It was difficult to hear their answers. That was distracting. But one thing that I, that Councilman Shadid touched on that I agree is I think the format was, is not conducive to getting real feedback. I understand the need to control the format to some extent to keep it from being too raucous and not getting anywhere. I mean, all of us have been to neighborhood meetings that got out of control and we wish we had a way to control them a little tighter. But that is, that process where you submit the question in writing, you give it to somebody, it goes into the back room and then a few minutes later, one or two of them come out, it just has the appearance of not being contrived. It may not have been as contrived as it looked, but it looked very contrived. People, they'd pass down the road and there'd be like 15 little cards. The little cards would then go into the back and then later, one card would come out and be put in the stack. Then later, two cards would come out and be put in the stack. The purpose of that could be very, there could be a good explanation for that. It could be organization, trying to get those same questions organized into the same category, or elimination of duplicate questions. I mean, there's a lot of reasons, but, but it, it just didn't, it just doesn't lend itself to having the appearance of transparency and openness. There has to be, at some point, if you're going to have a discussion, there has to be a discussion. There can't be just a question and a cold answer that you can't come back then and say, well, I don't agree with that. I think you're wrong about this, or you're right about that, or whatever. I, I'm not, I'm not casting any stones at the staff in terms of their intent or, there's a lot of work goes into those things and I understand that, but it just did not leave you with the feeling that it was an open, transparent meeting. It just didn't. And I had people sitting, the lady that Councilman Shadid is talking about, sat and grousted the entire time. I mean, she, every time there'd be a question, the answer would be, is it safe to be on a bicycle and with a streetcar? Well, the answer is yes. That's the answer. You don't need five minutes of time when you got 60 or 70, 80, 100 people waiting for the next question. You don't need to elaborate on how safe it is. The answer is it's safe. And so the guy answers, yes, but, and then he goes on and talks a minute or two. And I see people sitting in front of me doing this, you know, land the plane, you know, let's get to the next question. And I think that's not conducive to a good public feeling about it. Do you want me to say it one more time? I already said it about three times, I think. But, but I just, I think we could do better is what I'm saying. I appreciate the open, the meeting itself, I appreciate that very much. I appreciate the hard work staff went into, but I think the format is just not conducive to getting a good understanding out.
Councilman, I hear what you're saying both, Councilman. I'm not sure I disagree with you. We've been doing, I know we've been doing the questions for a number of years, not all meetings, but a number. I know there were some open meetings on the park, but I know that back in the '07 bond issue, we were still, we were doing the questions by cards. We've been doing them for quite a while. Doesn't mean we shouldn't revisit it. I did look at a lot of the questions last night. A lot of the questions were duplicates. They were, you couldn't read them, they were unintelligible. Some of them were way off base on some of them and again, so many duplications that they came in. So that is a big part of the calling. It was not an intent to control the message. It was, it was a content to, you know, have people up there that could answer the questions that were on the topic. But doesn't mean we can't do better. We won't. You know, we're doing, you know, it's on the internet now. We're changing, we're improving. That wasn't, we didn't do that last year, so it's, we're evolving.
I do think the suggestion that Ed made about the possibility of people with opposing viewpoints talking, so there'd be some give and take back and forth between at least them, might not be a bad idea. Because there are differences of opinion about the route, about how close the routes are together, about where the route goes. I mean, there's all kinds of differences. And it seems to me the only way to really air those differences would be in a more open, public format. I did say it one more time, didn't I?
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I had the great opportunity to attend a community meeting that was held in the eastern part of Oklahoma City, the Green Pastures, Dungy, New Chant area. And I said we do have two people who have signed up to speak in reference to some issues that they are facing in that area. But it was a great learning experience to learn what that particular community is going through. So I believe the two ladies have signed up to talk. Then the second thing is happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thanks, John. I appreciate that. Pat?
Your Honor, just a brief compliment to Eric Winger and his staff for being so responsive to citizen inquiries regarding paving projects. They tend to take a long time and people are sometimes dissatisfied with the construction effort because of the time it takes. And he's been very responsive and has some really solid answers to give those people in terms of street repairs. So I do appreciate that. Want to make a little bit?
All right, City Manager reports.
And happy birthday to you, Your Honor.
Thank you. City Manager reports.
Oh, the major report we have on there today is the summary of our revenue enforcement programs over the, over the last year. And Bob Palmkill and Craig Freeman are here from our finance, our city treasurer and our finance director here to answer any questions you may have about our efforts over the last year on revenue enforcement programs. They've become more aggressive over the last, more aggressive over the last year and I think we have some returns to show for that.
Just one question occurred to me is what's the overall return? We've invested X dollars and we collected X or Y plus something or other. How much is that return based on what we invested and what we got?
We can get an exact number for you. Do we have a ballpark number this morning?
A ballpark number is fine.
Yeah, I don't have a total cost right now.
Yeah, I don't have a total cost right now. We can get that. I know, like, there is information in there about, like, what we're spending on our auditors, individual auditors versus the amount we're collecting, but we have staff that's committed to that, so we can look at all those costs and get some information back.
Just to, like I said, I wouldn't ask you to do a lot of work on it, but just sort of rough--
Right. I mean, I would think that it's going to be less than $300,000 that we spend on that.
And we've collected how much more?
It's $2.9 million.
So, we're getting a 10 to 1?
This past year, right. This past year was an exceptional amount.
That's fine. That's close enough.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Ron, the citizens to be heard. We have a handful of people that have signed up to speak. I'll ask you if you'll keep your comments to three minutes or less. We'd appreciate it. Ryan Kiesel?
Thank you, Mayor, and happy birthday, members of the council.
Thank you. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Ryan Kiesel, that's R-Y-A-N-K-I-E-S-E-L. Home address, 1011 West Wrangler Boulevard, Seminole, Oklahoma. It's the metropolis that's just to the east of Oklahoma City. I work for the ACLU of Oklahoma, who I'm representing today. Our address is 3,000 Visayo Drive, Oklahoma City, 73103. I'm here to address you today regarding the Putnam City Baptist Church's proposed partnership with the city and the operation of a wellness center. The ACLU recognizes some serious legal concerns that we believe that the city should begin to address at the outset, prior to any consideration or approval of this partnership. As a city-owned resource, the center may not be operated as a faith-based facility or according to religious dictates. The proposal that the council is currently in possession of seems to blur those lines. As proposed, it appears that the partnership would violate the First Amendment's prohibition against the separation of church, or for the First Amendment's requirement of a separation of church and state. The proposed partnership raises too many legal questions, and we request that it be fully vetted by the city's attorney. And at the outset, I would say that while the partnership in and of itself isn't a violation of the First Amendment, we need to ensure that before we move forward with this, that we resolve any of these outstanding legal issues. ACLU offers its services in cooperating with the city's attorney and helping to vet those legal issues. Some specific concerns we have relate to the employment practices as set forth in the proposal. The wellness center may not adopt any discriminatory employment practices. However, it appears that in the proposal, they plan to use church hiring practices and guidelines. I'll direct your attention to page 15, page 24, and page 25 of the proposal. Their lack of protection or lack of commitment to equal opportunity employment is of serious concern to the ACLU, as I assure that it would be to the, or assume it would be to the council. There are no guarantees in that current proposal. Also, the proposal to close the wellness center on Wednesday evenings and all day on Sunday would be an inappropriate and likely unconstitutional use of a government facility. There are no procedures in place to prevent proselyzing to seniors, sponsored prayer, promotion of religion and church events for the users, and the partnership between, the partnership proposal identifies a number of religious partners, specifically the Open Arms Clinic. The mission of Open Arms Clinic is to minister the love of Christ as a full-service medical home focusing on healing of the mind, body, and soul. The proposal includes Bible study as a part of its program, and the wellness center will rely on volunteers from Putnam Baptist Church as live coaches. There are also issues with the transfer of land. We have to ensure that the transfer of land would be transferred at a fair market value. And then, the idea that the Open Arms Clinic would operate a free medical clinic in exchange the Butterfield Foundation would contribute $36,000 to the annual operating budget for 1,000 square feet, that's on page six, that's about $3 per square foot. Not a real estate expert by any means, but that seems to be below market value. And again, you know, all of this comes down to this point that this wellness center is incredibly important to the people of Oklahoma City. We need to make sure that it's done right. And so, before this council moves forward, again, I would urge your city attorney to fully vet all of these legal issues, and again, our services are at your disposal. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Henrietta Ilson?
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning, Henrietta. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Ward Councilman. I'm Henrietta Ilum, 11904 East Wilshire Boulevard, Spencer, Oklahoma. And I have a concern, I've been had a concern, and I've addressed it several times, but I've been told that there is no funds, that the road is not severe enough, but I wanted to know, what do you call severe, when you have to drive it each day? There are potholes on each side which have been patched continuously. I've lived there over 25 years. Nothing has been done to that road. Weed is consuming the road. You can't see a stop sign. If two cars are driving on that street at the same time, you have to get over to the side of the street, which, the side of the street is corroded. The pavement is corroded away. Weeds are growing into the pavement, and a lot of times, you cannot see the other driver until you drive out into the center of the street to kind of look around the corner to see who's coming, and it's, we need the street resurfaced, not keep on pothole. Been doing that for over 25 years, potholing that street, and each and every time, like I said, it's just like, it's such rof, it's in bad condition, but no one seemed to want to address that. Come and look at it. Look at the street yourself. Send someone out there to visualize this street. Like I said, I've lived there over 25 years. Other people have dressed it, they lived there a lot longer than me, and nothing has ever been done to that street outside of potholes.
Henrietta, if we can get specific here, we'll go out and look at the road.
It's from, like, Spencer Jones Road and Wilshire.
Spencer Jones Road.
Road and Wilshire. And if you go all the way to Anderson Road, really, if you go to Hawassee, because at Hawassee, Jones, Oklahoma takes over. They have paved that Wilshire to Hawassee. You know what I'm saying? Hawassee is where they stop at, right there at Hawassee, because Jones and Wilshire is further on down. And they done paved theirs, but they can seem to find the money to do theirs, but it stops right there, and then after that, we're left without any paving at all. All they do is come out, throw little potholes, you know, patch it up, and so, if your two cars are coming, you have to get over in the middle street, even if some other car's coming, you have to get over into where the pavement has corroded and the weeds have taken over. But you're still--
I'm not disputing your claims. What I'm trying to figure out is make sure we get the right road checked out. Is it Wilshire, your concern?
Wilshire Boulevard.
Okay, so it's Wilshire.
Right off of Spencer Jones Road.
So, where it enters Oklahoma City from Spencer and Jones, over to Anderson Road?
To Anderson Road and Wilshire. Down that street is very bad condition, and like I said, we have--
Let us look into it, and we will call you and let you know what our plans are, and kind of give you a report on how it rates. We have every street under a rating system. We ought to go out and look at it.
Well, can I ask you this? So, you rate the street by certain degrees, what you consider bad enough? Because I was told this, too. Well, it's not quite bad enough. Give it a while, you know. What do you call bad? I mean, what kind of grading system are you giving the streets, saying what's bad enough and what's not bad enough?
But that's what we want to find out.
Someone needed visually--
Oh, no, they will go out visually and look at it.
Okay.
We'll give you a call.
Thank you.
Thank you, Henrietta. Emma Campbell?
Good morning, Mayor, and Councilmen, and all of you this morning. I, too, come for the same reason, concerned about the streets--
Can we get your name and address, Emma?
Emma Campbell, 4103 Outpost Drive, Spencer, Oklahoma, 73084. Okay. I, too, am concerned about the streets out in the far northeast area of Oklahoma City, and basically, that same street that she was talking about, St. Paul Baptist Church is located there. And we go to church on Sunday and Wednesday, and sometimes Friday, and sometime all week. The streets are so bad that it is just terrible. It needs to be resurfaced. And I see that we find funds for everything else, Bricktown, downtown, and everywhere else. All we're asking for is to resurface the streets. Northeast 50th is so bad that the cemetery, that the processions has to go on Northeast 63rd to get to Hillcrest Cemetery, and that's, it's terrible. For when you take your loved one to the final resting place, that they have to make a detour and not go down Northeast 50th. Again, Councilman Pettit knows about this. We had a slide presentation of that at this meeting, and I'm hoping that he would share that with the council, so you can look at what's really going on in the far northeast quadrant of Oklahoma City. And again, please, ma'am, please, sir, if it was you, and you was living on that street, you would want your street paved. I've lived at 4103, forty-some years, and the street has never been paved.
Thank you for coming down.
I know that for a fact. Thank you.
Thanks, Emma. Joe Sarge Nelson?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Joe Sarge Nelson. I've been here several times before. I don't know how many of you knew the meeting was going on last night at Norick Library in reference to our rail system. I did see our esteemed Ward Four, Pete White there, and naturally, our city manager, Mr. Couch in the back. There was 89 people at this meeting, and the gentleman with the silver hair had a lot of questions before him. I put some before him that never got read. And my main reason today, after it was all said and done, we met with the gentleman that night, last night, after it was over with, and he agreed with a lot of few other people, especially the gentleman who caused the disturbance down there. And I asked him point-blank some questions and got some positive answers about it. I would like to address this council and make a request of the elected officials that's on this council to consider a resolution suspending the funding of the rail system, pending investigation as to its operation, construction, cost, all the figures. That I want to remove and put independently on the ballot before the taxpayers. Last night, I talked to a bunch of them. They had no idea what this cost or what it entailed. Four miles at the most in downtown Bricktown and Midtown, $25 million a mile? There's only 64% of the people that's never even going to even see this rail system, much less ride on it, but they're going to pay for it nonetheless. The people in the Bricktown area or downtown area are the ones paying for this rail system to come in here. The taxpayers are beginning to hurt. They're beginning to see things they don't want to see. I saw them a long time ago. I like the rail system, but not this particular rail system. We're not Los Angeles, Chicago, Detroit, or the bigger cities that's got them. Oklahoma City's only got 606 square miles, and 4.2 miles of it is going to be a rail system, and it's going to go nowhere, just to the business district. How many people are going to go from Bricktown, from their job, to go up to Baker's to buy a dollar doughnut? It's awful high dollars, and I'd like very much, Mr. Mayor, to poll these people that are elected only, and ask if they would consider a resolution to suspend the funding of this rail system pending that investigation. Do I have your word to do so?
No, this is your opportunity to talk to the council, Sarge. I appreciate you coming down.
In other words, you're saying no.
I'm not answering questions. This is not your opportunity to cross-examine the council. It's your opportunity to come down and speak, and I'm glad you attended the public meeting last night. Thanks for coming down.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Mayor, since I've been here? Aren't these elected officials of the city, of the people of Oklahoma City, just like you?
Sarge, you're not going to cross-examine us from the here. If you have questions, we'd be glad to talk to you off--
All right, I do have a question. I got a question of all five of them, six that are here. Do they, would they support a resolution or not?
Sarge, this is not your opportunity to ask questions. This is comments to council. We appreciate you coming down. Thank you.
This was the end of the world, right?
We have one more person that has signed up to speak. Don Simons?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for having allowed me this opportunity to speak to you about an important thing, which is the fluoridation of the water supply in Oklahoma City. It's been going on in many, many cities all across the United States for a long time, and it was actually a hoax. It was touted years ago as a means of stopping dental carries. Well, it's proven to be not really worthy of that. In fact, it's been detrimental, and I passed a lot of information out through Debbie Martin, who gave all of you people information. I hope all of you got it. Explains the dangers of fluoride, and that it's really harmful to health, and I'd like to see it removed from the water supply, along with many other people like me whistleblowers across the United States. The information that I passed out to Debbie explains that city by city all across the United States, in fact, around the world, they're voting to quit fluoridating the water because it causes dental fluorosis, which is a discoloration of teeth. It doesn't really help to stop cavities, but there are other things that would work better. Now, we're not worried about those things as far as the Oklahoma City water supply, but it's also in toothpaste, it's in mouthwashes. The amount that you get in the water supply is detrimental over a long period of time. They feel that it's cumulative. In other words, you keep using fluoridated products in water for a long time, people get lupus, they get multiple sclerosis symptoms and stuff. A lot of this thing, they feel that it's coming from fluoridation.
Do you have any documentation on this? Do you get--
Well, I gave three sheets to each of the councilmen through Debbie Martin, and I hope that she, she said she gave it to all of them, all of you, and I hope that you read it, because it has a lot, this is, this is the information--
Maybe they haven't seen it yet, but we appreciate you bringing it down to us. Anything else?
Well, okay. Toothpaste has fluoride in it as well, and mouthwash. This box has a warning not to allow children under six years of age to brush with this. It also says that if you swallow this toothpaste, you better call a poison center. Now, that's another problem, because when you are brushing your teeth with this and drinking the water, of course, you're going to swallow the water. You don't swallow the toothpaste, but sublingual, under your tongue, the danger, the poison in this fluoride is going into your bloodstream directly, and through the blood-brain barrier, and getting into your brain. But they don't tell you that. So, if you swallow the toothpaste or not, you've still been poisoned sublingually by having this fluoride get into your, sublingual, into your bloodstream directly. So, that's the danger, and I'm going after the toothpaste people, too, if I can help get the water supply cleaned up in Oklahoma City, and a lot of other people, whistleblowers like me across the country, can get this done. Then, we're going after the toothpaste and the other people. There's a substitute that you can put in the toothpaste. It's called xylitol. Xylitol is a very safe substance. It's used now in different food products, including breath mints and other things. It's not dangerous. So, if a little child has xylitol in his toothpaste instead of fluoride, if he swallows it, he doesn't have to call a poison center.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this, Sarge.
Jim, do you know if we, do we test the concentration of fluoride? Do we--
Oh, absolutely.
Do you know about what it is?
It's between .5 milliliters, this is long, I'm going on memory, or Marsha knows, but there is--
Less than one part per million?
Yeah. And here's the deal, he's absolutely correct. A high dose of fluoride can be counterproductive. It can cause tooth damage, but for years and years and years, it's been proven that a minimal dose between, what's our range of fluoride, Marsha?
Naturally, it's about .3 parts per million, and coming out of larger than, on average, it's about .7. Maximal is less than .12.
Okay. So, all within acceptable ranges. It's very closely regulated by EPA. And so, we follow the regulations, and too much fluoride is a bad thing, but too much of other things we put in the water is also a bad thing, too much chloride, or chlorine, too much ozone, too much of lime, or alum, or, you know, sodium hydroxide.
So, Portland voters just voted to eliminate fluoride, but is there any other city that's done it besides Portland?
Yeah, all across, you're talking about other cities doing this?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. The information I passed out, one of the sheets was about removing fluoridation. The city at the time, Dr. William Camel Douglas II MD, says that any amount of fluoride in the water is too much, any amount, because like I said, it's meant, it's known to be cumulative over a long--
But you have, you have two parts per million in grape juice. I mean, you have 3.3 parts per million just in groundwater. I mean--
I know, yeah. Well, here's the thing, that's natural fluoride. It's a miniscule amount. It's not considered to be too bad, but when you add artificial from the-- But when you add artificial, from the aluminum industry, fluoride is a byproduct of the aluminum industry and also the people make fertilizers. So they want to get rid of it some way, so they've found a real convenient way to do it. They're going to sell it to the cities in the United States at a high price. It costs around- I would imagine Oklahoma City, the cost of fluoridation is probably $50,000 or $75,000 a year, maybe more, I don't know. And any amount of it in the water is- it shouldn't be there. It's a poison. That's why I'm fighting to get it taken out of the water. I don't want any of it in there. I'm saying, me. The people that are onto this problem, all of us want the fluoride taken out. Then we're going after the toothpaste people and the other people to put a better substance in there, which is xylitol.
Don, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? All right, we're adjourned.